I don't want to get away from all of this. And I've been a caregiver myself, so taking care of my grandfather, I knew it was very difficult to even leave him home alone. So it is good to know that there's such programs out there. And with the emergency response system which we monthly provide, if they fall, they're home alone, they could press the button, paramedics immediately will show up to assist them in getting up or assisting them in any way.
Well, that's the worst fear.
It is.
It really is. I've told the story before, being on the freeway, stuck in traffic, and finding out that my mother-in-law had fallen. And I was still 30 minutes away. And what do you do? You know, and it can really drive you crazy. But I want to, you mentioned something about the psychosocial aspects of giving care. I think a lot of people are concerned that when a senior citizen decides to stay in their home, that they're choosing not to socialize with people. But that's not really true. They still want to be active and get out.
That is, that is, that is correct. They love to be active. A lot of them, we refer to adult day healthcare programs, senior centers, and they love to be active in those ways. We provide transportation for them to get out.
Very important in Los Angeles.
It is very important in Los Angeles. And a lot of them do want to be active. And they even, the monthly contacts and the visits that our care managers provide for the clients, they feel that they are appreciated. That there's somebody there to care for them.
That's what, well, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words. And Aging in L.A. recently visited beneficiaries of Partner and Care's multipurpose senior services program. Pamela Antoine has been looking after her mother, Ellen Pete, first from a distance, and now they live together. And she talks with our end care manager, Marjan Bijatani.
My mom was diagnosed with Alzheimer's in 2000, and I immediately became her caregiver at that time. It was a long-distance caregiver job because we lived in different cities.
Was it difficult to be a long-distance caregiver?
No, it was.
It's not easy, of course.
No.
How did you feel when you first heard the diagnosis?
Oh, it was a mixture of emotions. It was, I was overwhelmed. I knew a little about Alzheimer's and different dementias, but I really had to go to the research then, the books, to really understand what was happening to my mom. But Alzheimer's was the furthest from my thoughts.
Yeah.
You know, we never want to believe that's what's happening with our loved ones.
Of course. And were resources available, or was it difficult to find resources for your mom?
It was a struggle. It was a struggle when she was diagnosed. Then, you know, where do I begin? What do I do in terms, how can I help add quality to her life, whatever is left of it, and keep her kind of in the here and now? I reached out in the community to different resources, Alzheimer's Association, Department of Aging, to find resources to try and help. Because with her, there seemed to be a pretty fast decline. I noticed a very fast decline going on, and I really wanted to be able to accommodate.
Of course. Tell me, how did you learn about Partners in Care, the MSSP program?
Partners in Care, wonderful program. I learned about through Department of Aging in my search of finding resources out there. My mom, at one point, started to lose weight, and her doctor had prescribed a higher-calorie diet for her, and Insure was prescribed. But living on a limited income, we couldn't afford it. And so I had to try and find a way to be able to provide this for her. Fortunately, Partners in Care was able to help us with that while we were waiting for a TAR to be approved, for her to be provided with the amount of Insure that she would need daily to help maintain her weight.
How has our program impacted your life and your mom's life?
Well, it has really impacted our life greatly. As I mentioned, the Insure was provided by Partners in Care until a TAR was approved, and it took quite some time. They helped me with other things in terms of incontinent supplies, things that our budget doesn't allow for me to be able to have, you know, extra to provide for my mom. So it's been really a great help to us.
Had we not been there, how would that have impacted your life? What would have happened?
I hate to think what would have happened. I would not have been able to be a full-time caregiver to my mom if it were not for Partners in Care. I would have, you know, financially, we're pretty stressed, even still. But there are things that I think my mom would have probably ended up in a convalescent home, mainly because she is beyond the point of being in a board-and-care home, residential living facility or assisted living. So I think I would have had to look in terms of a convalescent home, and that would have really broke my heart. It's a joy to have her with me. It's a lot of work, but it's a joy to have her with me. It's very gratifying.
So we have provided you with respite care. How has that been helpful to you?
That has provided me time to be able to get some much-needed time to, I call it "me" time for myself. That has been provided thanks to Partners in Care.
Has our program helped you manage your mom and help you keep your mom at home?
Absolutely. It gives me that break to kind of be able to revive my energy so that I can continue on with her daily and provide the best care that I'm able to provide to her. And I think she knows that, too.
Yeah. I'm sure. I'm sure she feels it.
I think so.
That was wonderful testimony to the services you're providing people. I was, I was struck by her admission that things can get out of hand so quickly, that diagnosis and an illness can progress so quickly that you don't know what comes next. And by having professionals around you who are already experienced, they can kind of prepare you for those next steps. And that's got to be incredibly satisfying to be able to say to the family, "Now, look, we've got this covered now, but this is what's coming."
Definitely, I totally agree. Just to help them out with whatever needs they may have, just to keep their loved ones at home, in this case was their mom, to keep her, to keep her mother at home, and just to see the smile on her face that we were there to help her out with the needs that she needs, she has to keep her at home. And overall, I think it's been a great experience for her to be part of our program. And it's, it's just, we get so satisfied to see such wonderful outcomes when we are able to be there to help them out and to keep them at home in such as this case.
Right. Well, you know, Anwar, it happens in families that somebody ends up being the person that provides the in-home care. Are you able to give counseling to other family members to help them understand what the primary caregiver is going through and what their contribution maybe should be?
Sure. We provide counseling through a licensed clinician. We also provide various other types of resources. You know, it's important for all viewers to know that this is a state-funded program, and it's available throughout the state of California. And it's also important to point out that we have a collaborative of vendors and agencies that help us do our job. So we, we have other organizations that help us manage this case. And by the way, all this is very, very confidential. Confidentiality is our number-one goal here.
Well, we need to talk more about this, but it's time to take a short break. And when we come back, we'll continue our discussion on how to assist vulnerable older adults to avoid having to leave their own homes. Please stay tuned. We'll be right back with more of Aging in L.A.
The biggest blessing in life is to realize you're a person of all power.
So many of us wonder, "Why are we living?" Well, that's why we're living, to help others.
Community work brings families closer together.
When we help each other, we all get help.
Doing good for others, doing positive action always comes back around and enriches your life. It's the biggest gift you could ever give yourself.
Doing good is good for all of us.
Please join us in volunteering.
Improve your health by helping others. Visit iparticipate.org.
Before approaching an intersection, so that's why two wrong turns don't make a right turn.
Now let's learn about tailgating.
Hey, that's how I got my ticket.
You got a ticket for tailgating? That's not good. That can be really annoying.
Doesn't get you there any faster.
It leaves you no distance to break.
Which makes it easier to get into a crash.
And it also may increase your insurance premium.
And I hate a tailgater.
Tailgating causes crashes.
Back off.
Watch the road.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, "Life is Better at Home." Our guests are from Partners in Care Foundation. Esther M. Seifalian is supervisor, care managers, and Anwar Zulayed is vice president of direct services at the foundation. Thank you both again for joining us. This is, this is really a good discussion because the idea that you have identified best practices for keeping people in their home is so important because most people would prefer it. Can you tell me a little bit about how you can apply the best notions that you've uncovered to a real-life situation?
Definitely. It is known that aging at home is preferred more often, obviously, than being institutionized. And, you know, it could be the simplest thing, simplest modifications at the house, such as adding a handheld shower hose to assist them taking showers easily, or a grab bar, or a carpet tape to secure the rugs down so they don't fall. The simplest things could help these clients and individuals, our elders, seniors, stay at home and be comfortable and safe at home. And that's the goal, to keep them as comfortable and as secure and to prevent any falls. That's, that's our motto, just to help them out.
I understand. Now, Anwar, you mentioned something while we were in the break about how fearful some seniors can be about having strangers in their home or signing a contract, oh, somebody's going to take my house. How do you help reassure a senior that these services are not going to end up taking them to bankruptcy court?
Exactly. This is, these services are at no cost. They are theirs, their benefit that they've earned and are entitled to. It's a state program. We are a nonprofit agency, and there is no contract to sign. You simply sign the care plan agreeing that this is the service you want us to provide. Each client has an individualized, personalized care plan, and based on the agreement with the family and the client and the care managers and, of course, the supervisor, we all come up with a care plan. And once the client signs, we're able to provide them this needed service.
Now, what about follow-up? I mean, elderly people's needs do change. Is that part of what you do by managing or supervising, rather, the case managers?
Well, all the care managers actually make monthly contacts to their clients. And every three months, they go out to visit the client. And every six months, we have the alternate discipline, which meant like, if the primary care manager is a social worker, the nurse will go out to see the client and assess what they believe might have been changes and how to assist the client even further. And every year, we have a reassessment, is when we go out there and assess the entire atmosphere, safety, ambulatory equipment usage, medications, emergency response services, just assess the whole situation, the health conditions, diagnosis of the client. If they have changed severely, how we could assist to keep them further from being institutionalized.
Right. You know, I noticed in the, in the piece that we saw with Ms. Antoine, that she actually had a hoist to help move her mother around. Now, how would you even know that such a thing exists?
Well, that's what, that's why we're here for.
Right.
You know, we work really, really close with their primary doctors and their physicians in order to come up and fulfill their care plan needs. Our nurses and our social workers are very well-trained to be able to identify any medical needs, any safety needs, or anything that they, they need basically to make sure that they're independent and living at home with dignity. And that includes working with their primary physician and getting the prescriptions needed to install these safety devices or hoisters in their house.
Well, a lot of people aren't aware that you actually do need a prescription to get things like a wheelchair or whatever. But that, the hoist, I was just thinking of the many times that I, you know, it's physical. You pick this person up to move them into the shower because you don't...
We do help with that.
Well, and that's important.
We do help with all the process, even to get a prescription from the doctor. Our care managers will contact the doctor and say, "We realize that so-and-so needs a hoister lift," or "to assist them," or "needs a cane," or whatever the needs might be. And our care managers do make contacts with the doctor's offices to get a prescription. And we do have vendors who we use, who we send the prescription out to, and immediately they know the process and how a company works, will send out the needed items to the client.
Right. It's, I, I know, I have seen too often where the husband ends up trying to take care of his wife, and he's not very good at it.
Right.
And needs a lot of counseling to come to understand, this is not a failing, this is, you are not failing your wife in your marital vows. This is a hard job for anyone.
It absolutely is. And we provide counseling and education on how to be a proper caregiver. And, you know, we work closely with the city of Los Angeles and their family caregiver outreach support groups, and, and ask the expert events through our family care partnership program. Also have Partners in Care that would help all caregivers be educated and provide them the, the knowledge and support that they need.
Right. Now, it's very important. If this has piqued your interest, we're going to again put the telephone numbers up for you to be able to call Partners in Care Foundation so you'll have a point of contact. This is, it's a challenge, and we read them off again for you. Area code 818-837-3775, or 213-738-8320. And the website is www.picf.org. Of course, you can call the Department of Aging, and we'll get you this contact information. So Esther, do you think that the population of growing numbers of seniors is going to get used to calling on you and other providers? Do you think it's going to be part of their, of their new reality?
Oh, I think so, especially with the baby boomers retiring.
Yes.
They're used to, more of them are used to living at home and living, living independently, I should say, than living at home. And they are going to get used to being on their own more than the current generation. And they are going to rely on little programs like ours to assist them with whatever needs they may have.
Yeah. Anwar, that's interesting. Are you, is there an educational outreach for the people who are potential clients? Is there, are you actively telling people, "Look, we exist, and you're going to need us one day"?
At Partners in Care Foundation, we have various in-services that we do through the city of Los Angeles community to make sure that they're aware of the services that we provide, whether it be caregiver services, multipurpose senior service programs, adult day programs.
I wish, I mean, I wish we had more time, but that's all the time we have for today's edition of Aging in L.A. I want to give special thanks to our guests from Partners in Care Foundation, Esther M. Seifalian and Anwar Zulayed. Thanks to both of you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you, bet. Now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. Did you know that more than 10 million older adults require assistance with daily living activities such as eating, dressing, and personal care? One-third of older adult Americans rely on Social Security as their main source of income. Simple home modifications such as adding grab bars and handrails could help many seniors avoid moving from their home. Ninety-six percent of seniors wish to remain independent in their own homes instead of moving in with family members. Increased provision of in-home services to assist independents in the home is causing an increased vacancy rate of up to 30% at some assisted living and nursing home facilities. Fifteen percent of late mortgage payments in the older adult population are due to increased medical costs. And services to assist older adults to remain at home include home health care, homemaking services, nutrition programs, home safety and repair services, which are available through the Department of Aging. Call 1-800-510-2020 for details. That's 1-800-510-2020 for details. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life, and also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and hear your ideas for future programs. So please, give us a call. Number's right there on your screen, area code 213-2524088. That's 213-2524088. Call us with your comments and ideas. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for watching. We'll see you the next time.
I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Wednesday, March 30th, 2011. We are still awaiting a quorum. Thank you to council members Hahn, Labange, Reyes, Zine. That takes us to five members. We do have excuses on the desk today from council members Alakon and Hahn, but we are waiting the following late council members. Ms. Hahn actually is here. Thank you for being in. So we're just awaiting Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Wezar, Mr. Coretts, Mr. Kerkorian, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Wesson. Mr. Smith is here, thank you, and Ms. Perry is here as well. We are waiting three, four more members, so please make your way down as soon as possible so we can begin our meeting. Thank you to the public for your patience while we wait those tardy council members.
Our agendas are available in the back for anybody who would like to see the items that we are going to be voting on today. Those are made available 72 hours in advance for the public, as well as 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. Welcome to our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts these meetings live and rebroadcast them each evening, as well as those viewing us through the internet at lacity.org, listening in on their phones through council phone at 213-621-CITY. And anybody who's in our remote facilities in Van Nuys or San Pedro, where you can testify from those city halls if that is closer to where you live as well. Feel free to fill out any speaker cards for items that are on today's agenda. All items will get a speaker card, sorry, a hearing either in full council or in committee. And there's a section for general public comment as well for items not on today's agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. And we have a clock to help you guide your time, two minutes per speaker there at the podium or in Van Nuys and San Pedro. Again, thank you to those members who are here. We're just one member short. Mr. Alakon is excused today, but we're still awaiting council members Cardenas, Wezar, Coretts, Kerkorian, and Rosendahl. We have Mr. Coretts. And with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Hahn, Wezar, Coretts, Kerkorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcia, ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
All right. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Parks seconds without objection. The minutes for my last meeting will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
All right. Mr. Coretts moves, and Mr. Labange second without objection. Those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, colleagues, if you have any items you'd like to call special for today's agenda, direct your attention. It'll be the time to call those specials as we go through them. First items, please.
Mr. President, items one through six are hearing protests and comments. Notice for public hearing. Item six is a PCN in Council District 14. Findings and recommendations are required.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call these special? Sorry, Coretts on Mr., oh, sorry, on which one? Number six?
Number six?
Yes, I'd like to call, actually, I'd like to have number six continued to April 6th on behalf of Councilmember Weezer.
Okay, April 6th without objection, we'll continue item number six. Do we have cards on any of the other ones?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings on one through five then. If nobody else wishes to call any of those special, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on items one through five and tabulate the vote.
Ten or eyes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items seven through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item seven is an ordinance. Would you like to hold that on the desk until 12 members are present?
Yes, let's hold item seven on the desk as we require 12 members for the reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, further, a committee report for item 14 has been submitted and distributed for council's consideration, and likewise, a committee report for item, a revised committee report for item eight has been submitted and distributed for council's consideration.
Okay, we'll have those as what is before us. Mr. Parks, any special?
Mr. President, we get items 10 through 13 special.
10 through 13 special. Mr. Parks, are there specials, colleagues? Anybody else wishes to call anything special? If not, okay, we'll take up the balance. These have had hearings in committee.
Working on your.
Nobody wishes to reopen those, then we'll go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 17 through 28 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Is there any objection to considering these items? If not, let's go ahead and take those up.
Mr. President, we have a request from a member to continue items 22, excuse me, 20, 22, and 25 to April 6th.
Is there any objection to continuing those till April 6th? Seeing none, we will go ahead and continue those items till the 6th. Let's hold 17. The commissioner on the desk, Mr. Labange.
Item 19, I think, is there a staff here to explain that?
I do not know if they are here. Do we have any CLA? That's from committee. I can, I can run through it if you want to, just educate folks about it.
19.
We'll call 19 special, and I can do a little presentation on that. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Are there specials, colleagues? If there are no others on these items, do we have any cards on these items? Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, we do have cards for item 23.
23. Okay, we'll call that special for card from the public. Close the other public hearings. That leaves us with 18, 21, 24, and 26 through 28. If we can prepare the roll on the balance, please. Sorry, yeah, we have 18, 21, 24, and then 26 through 28 left. Please open the roll.
Weezer is here now.
Oh, okay.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
As approved, let's take up seven now that we have 12 members. Nobody wishes to call 12 special? Let's go ahead and open the roll on number seven. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, that is approved. Go to the continuation agenda, please.
Mr. President, on the continuation.
You want seven special?
I thought it was on the board for special.
We're just waiting 12 members. Okay, well, let's go ahead and reconsider seven for Mr. Zine. Please open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, we'll call that special for Mr. Zine, no problem. And item 30, on the continuation agenda, please.
Item 30 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, Mr. There's no objection to considering that, Mr. We will consider that. Mr. Zine, would you like to continue that to when?
To 6th.
April 6th as well without objection. We'll continue item 30 till April 6th. All right, let's go ahead and we'll take up the commission appointment first, and then we'll come back for a public comment, as is our custom. Item number 17, I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Planning and Land Use Management Committee, Mr. Reyes. On item number 17, the commissioner, that is before us.
Good morning. Well, thank you for taking the time and joining us today. Mr. Epstein is a South Valley Area Planning Commission candidate, and I want to just, if you may, share with us some of your background and your goal as Commissioner, and I want to thank you for your time, please.
Thank you. It's been an interesting ride for me. I was on the South Valley Area Planning Commission under Mayor Riordan, and then I got reappointed under Antonio, and I was serving as the President of the South Valley Area Planning Commission for years. Then I was asked to come onto the CPC not too long ago, last year, and I've been on the CPC and really enjoyed the work in the CPC. And then the President of the South Valley, who was replacing me, went to the Coastal Commission, so now I'm going back to the APC.
Great. Well, with all that experience, can you show us maybe one of the most memorable cases that you might have engaged?
No.
There's too many, right?
There's too many.
But I want to thank you for your time, and I'd like to encourage my colleagues to vote an eye for, and support you in this effort, and I want to thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. These questions were prepared by my planning deputy.
Uh-oh.
So what experience did you learn from City Planning Commission that you can apply as you return to the South Valley Area Planning Commission? From the City Planning Commission that you can apply to the South Valley Area Planning Commission? These are not supposed to be hard questions, Matt.
That is a tough question. You know what, it's, I mean, there are completely different kinds, types of cases. It's, I couldn't answer that without giving it a lot of thought. I mean, there was, I did learn a lot, but what I learned was, was that the lessons were to be applied to the city, the citywide issues, not the, not the area planning commissions. So that's a tough question, Dennis.
Okay, in your four-plus years of previous service on the South Valley Area Planning Commission, what have been the most controversial issues in the valley? These are easy ones, Matt.
Yeah, I'm gonna get back at him next time he gets in front.
Jonathan, get back at Jonathan.
Yeah, I know. The most controversial?
Yes.
The most controversial are the cell tower issues. Yeah, and unfortunately.
Even down in Harbor, Ms. Hahn.
Yeah, and unfortunately, there's, there's federal issues that trump this, and I was actually hoping on the CPC that we could have addressed some of those issues, and I was, we were, I was talking with President Roshan on that, and we were talking to a couple of the councilmembers on that as well. That's, that's, that's a tough thing because there's, you know, our hands are tied, and the neighbors come.
Yeah.
Those are tough issues.
So that, that's a citywide major issue on the cell tower.
It is a citywide, yeah.
And then the next one, appeals on alcohol. CUPs in the 3rd District come to the South Valley Area Planning Commission, most of which are on Ventura Boulevard. What do you look for in these applications, and what are the best practices in ensuring public safety and preservation of adjacent neighborhoods while aiding businesses and the vitality on Ventura Boulevard? So with the ABC licenses?
Really, it's, it's, I don't like to base an opinion until I hear all the facts, and so, you know, it really depends on what the community wants, what the neighborhood council wants, and what the applicant's past, past record is.
So weigh in all of the information.
Yeah.
And the final question I think you'll really enjoy. Do you think that Jonathan Brand is the best planning deputy in City Hall?
Yes, except sometimes his, his choice of ties isn't quite where it should be.
Matt, I've known you a long time. You're well qualified for this, so you know you've got my support.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. Mr. Coretz is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is one of the easiest appointments we've had in a long time. Matt's been on this commission before. It's pretty simple. He did a great job. We're glad to have you back, and we know you'll do a terrific job again. I know as both a business owner, as an active member of Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, you bring a lot of perspective to this, and glad to have you back providing leadership on this commission. Thank you for your willingness to, to again serve, and I encourage all my colleagues to cast an eye vote.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange is our next speaker.
I want to thank you. I want you to introduce someone special up right next to the President's City Council right now, Dad.
That's my son Jonathan hiding behind the screen.
All right, Jonathan's on spring break, so it's good to have you down here. Thank you for your service to the city. The South Valley is a tremendous part of our whole city and very active. I think it's some part, and when I did account once, it had more 47th, if that's the right number, beer and wine licenses than any section west of the San Diego area, west through Willand Hills. This was some years ago. That being said, the one that I, as a planner, I just wanted to advocate for, if you would. You're familiar with the Police Department, they have senior lead officers, so the neighborhoods connected. What we do, planning, is something that really affects people. I'm trying to push this year to advocate for senior lead planners, who the community know, who could contact and be aware of the, of the challenges when land use decisions are being made. But that term senior lead planner, if you spread that around, I'd appreciate it, man.
Absolutely, it's good, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and thank you, Matt, for your willingness to continue to serve. And with that, we have the vote before, so Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the nomination. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Congratulations, and welcome aboard again.
Thank you.
All right, we go to our general public comment now, and our first speaker is Michael Kelly. He'll be followed by Martín Hernández.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Michael Kelly. I live in the West Adams area. I'm a member of Unite Here Local 11, and I'm a Staples Center and Home Depot Center employee. And I'm here to say that I support the Farmers Field proposal because basically my job at Staples Center has given me the opportunity to make a decent living and put money back in the community, and having a football stadium in downtown's gonna bring more business to the area, and it's gonna provide good jobs for, for a lot of people. So I need City Council, we need City Council to support this project. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Martín Hernández is our next speaker. After that is Waylon Spencer.
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Martín Hernández. I live in Carson. I worked at Staples Center for 10 years, and it has given me the opportunity to take care of my family, good salary, and have a good job with benefits and respect in our jobs. Having a good football stadium in downtown will help bring more business, conventions, and tourists to L.A., which means more good jobs and a stronger local economy for everyone. We need the City Council to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Waylon Spencer is our next speaker, and then Juan Avila will follow.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Councilors of City Council. My name is Waylon Spencer. I'm with Local 416 Reinforced Iron Workers. I reside in Nowak, California. Having the Farmers Field Football Stadium in downtown L.A. will bring more business, conventions, and tourism to L.A., which will bring more, which means more good jobs and a stronger local economy for everyone. We need the City Council to support this project. Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments this morning. Juan Avila is our next speaker, and then Noel Weiss will follow.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Juan Avila, and I live in Riverside. I'm here to say that to support Farmers Field Downtown Stadium, this project will create thousands of good middle-class jobs. If we built the football stadium, we will bring more business to the city of L.A., which means a stronger economy. We need the City Council to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Noel Weiss is our next speaker.
Morning, Council. First off, happy birthday to Janice Hahn. One of the best descriptions, and one of the best descriptions I ever heard of the City Council, and I think it's accurate, and I think it's also welcome because we have kids here today, is that City Council's really just a bunch of kids with power, and I think it's really true. For example, at the end of the session yesterday, we had a 12-person vote, and only 10 people were here in the chamber. No one, the City Attorney was silent, City Clerk was silent, the President was silent, everybody was silent. David Zanningheiser was in the room. He was silent. I thought we were gonna get any report. Mr. Smith was listed as present, he wasn't here, and Mr. Reyes was listed as present, he wasn't here. I don't think it's too much to ask for you people to obey your own rules. Somebody needs to stand up when there basically is a violation of the rules. Now, going forward, number two, I want to press for, again, since we have the, the stadium project coming in, and obviously there's a factual precedent being set for a statement of overriding considerations on the environmental that's not gonna come out good, I'm, again, want to press for what I call the $100,000-10K solution. $100,000, 10,000, $100,000 people, 10,000 per person is a billion dollars. I think there are ways of empowering the people with regard to this project, creating the jobs, and moving the city forward in a more meaningful way. More important, yesterday, with regard to the hotel situation, one of the things that was absent, and by the way, it demonstrates the remarkable achievement of Janice Hahn in getting a living wage ordinance for the people at the hotels. There was no living wage provision in that development agreement, not at all. Jan Perry wasn't for it, nobody was for it, the, in terms, Mr. Reyes wasn't for it, Mr. Kerkorian wasn't for it, Mr. Weezer wasn't for it, and yet Janice Hahn, in terms of the hotels, and by the way, the city is giving these people $74 million, but yet no living wage for those workers who are, the hospitality workers at the hotels. That's wrong. That should have happened. There's a time period, ladies and gentlemen, we gotta start rising above our self-imposed limitations, which produces the kind of mediocrity that sometimes attends these situations. Again, City Council, please obey your own rules, and Mr. Smith, if you're not here, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be listed as being present.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. Yes, Mr. Labange.
I was acting president at your choice there, and the clerk was right below me, the people were here, his name was not on the list. I think the gentleman may be misinformed, but if the clerk wants to look into that, I welcome it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your great service to Los Angeles.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that will be Doug Haynes.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Regarding the project, this downtown stadium, here's an article from February 8th in the Downtown News. CRA Approves L.A. Live's Long-Term Plan. For a 28-acre expansion that would add almost 600,000 square feet of office space and nearly 270,000 square feet of broadcasting studio to the South Park campus. That was last year, 2010. So the question would be, why wasn't AEG moving on the stadium then? What's the rush? Follow-up on that, this is a story, article regarding L.A. officials follow-up on stadium talks. Councilwoman Janice Hahn said the stadium would also be used as part of the convention center, boosting its capacity from 750,000 square feet to 1.4 million square feet of convention space. So if you're gonna increase it, what's the need to rebuild the West hallway? That being said, there's an EIR going on for the stadium, but there's no EIR going on for the West hallway. Isn't that what the bond is being floated for, the $250 million bond that AEG says they'll repay? It's gonna take a year for the EIR. Well, if it's gonna take a year for the EIR for the stadium, and they don't do the EIR for the convention center, that's two years for the convention center EIR, and another year for it to be built. Something is rotten here. We know that City Council, because they're open and transparent, won't stand for this, and we know that you'll look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Haynes is our next speaker, and although we already voted on it, Mr. Haynes, I'll reopen 14 as well if you want to take some extra time afterwards. Just, we had a hearing, but I saw your card as a courtesy, if you'd like to speak on that, too, we can take that up after.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Doug Haynes. I'm with East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. I'm not gonna talk about Farmers Field. However, I'm gonna talk on behalf of our community about asking the City Council and our mayor's office to please request that the Drug Enforcement Administration come in and shut down the illegal marijuana dispensaries that are proliferating in our city. Last August, I spoke before this council about an illegal dispensary operating in my neighborhood on residentially zoned land immediately adjacent to single-family homes. Even though this dispensary was identified as a priority by LAPD, it was raided four and a half months later on November 16th. On November 17th, it opened again for business, has been operating seven days a week ever since. The owner's been bragging that he's been making, since the start of this year, a million dollars already on this dispensary. Even if the dispensary is eventually shut down to costly litigation, it will just quickly reopen nearby, since illegal dispensaries are opening undebated through Los Angeles. While these criminal marijuana clinics can tie up the city in court for years, they have no defense against federal authorities and can be quickly and permanently closed by the DEA. In conversations that I've had with DEA agents, they've emphatically stated that they want to shut down these illegal dispensaries, but that our mayor and even members of the city council have told them to stay out of Los Angeles. This is unacceptable to us. The DEA recently raided illegally operating clinics in West Hollywood, and no one can claim that West Hollywood City Council is anti-medical marijuana. To open a liquor store, bar, or strip joint in Los Angeles requires public hearings and strictly enforced conditions. To be a pot dealer in L.A. requires nothing but a rent deposit and open arrogance for the law. San Francisco has 23 marijuana dispensaries. Long Beach has 30. West Hollywood has four, and Santa Monica has none. Los Angeles, in contrast, has over 400 dispensaries operating legally. Councilman Garcia, we ask that you request the DEA to come in and help us on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you wanna state that, Doug, why don't we just reconsider 14 while you're there? And you can... You can comment on 14. Open the roll on reconsideration of 14. And close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And just on that previous one, we will have a staff member come talk to you about the DA stuff, but if you'd like to comment on 14.
Well, the problem with talking about 14 is that the council members are familiar with the issue at hand, but what I will say is the development agreement on Columbia Square, which will last for 15 years, and the problem that I have with that is, number one, that 15 years means that the next council member will have no say whatsoever over this site. There's only three terms, 12 years, so they're not gonna have any say whatsoever. As a community, we see the applicant area property partners as someone who doesn't plan to develop, but simply wants to flip this site. And they're seeking all these entitlements and this long development agreement in order to have the leverage to do so. I've known of a couple film schools that are interested in this site, Columbia Square, because of its history and its capacity, and we would love to see that integrated into this project. However, I don't see the project that was approved last year going anywhere. They haven't done anything with this site. It's just another derelict site in Hollywood, and that's the problem we're having. So I think we should reduce the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council asked for a reduction from 15 years down to seven years. Even Kelly Bernard, your planning deputy, said to the City Planning Commission that 10 years is more than enough. So let's be realistic about that. That's our argument. The community benefits that have been touted for this project, I think, are ridiculous. Only $2.2 million for affordable housing. That's the equivalent of approximately four and a half units of affordable housing. Clark Project is putting in over 100 units of affordable housing. They're only providing $450,000 for traffic mitigation for the neighborhoods. $900,000 were provided by the Sale Plaza project for traffic mitigation for neighborhoods, even though Sale Plaza only had one significant intersection that could not be mitigated. This project has seven. Also, 75% of the neighborhood street segments are significantly impacted by this project if it ever proceeds. Anyway, those are our concerns, and that's why I think it should be reduced. Thank you very much, you give me an opportunity to speak on it.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. Thank you. We'll take up that item again. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. We'll continue to work to address those concerns as well. We'll go back to public comment. Craig Cox is our next speaker. Eric Moore will follow, and after Mr. Moore is Jeffrey Brown.
Good morning. Good morning. How are you? My name is Craig Cox. I'm part of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. I'm a board member and the Public Safety co-chairman. I'd really like to talk about the medical marijuana clinics in our area and the large amount of clinics that are opening currently. We have a new one, actually, at 5421 Santa Monica Boulevard that just opened up within the past 30 days, who actually has a happy hour for their customers between 4:00 and 6:00, where their product is half off. It's a little ridiculous. I mean, it's not really a bar. It should be for nonprofit. I work with homeless, at-risk youth in the Hollywood area, and 95% of the people that we serve are going to these medical marijuana clinics and purchasing product and just walking the streets high, all afternoon and evening. I'd like to see the city council work something out with the DEA and let them come in and shut these clinics down, you know? And at least some kind of enforcement should be done to at least crack down on the illegal activity that's obviously going on with these clinics. I know from what I've heard from LAPD, they would love to go in and shut these clinics down, but aren't getting the support they need from the mayor's office and from city council. So I would just like to see that happen. It's a really bad public safety issue for all of East Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. And I may see you tonight, the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. We'll get on that one. My staff member's talking to Mr. Haynes about it as well. Thank you. Eric Moore is our next speaker. After that is Jeffrey Brown. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Eric Moore. I'm the vice president of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. I'm also co-chair of the Public Safety Committee. We work all the time with you guys, especially with you, Mr. Garcia and CD 13. One of the things we're asking for this morning is, we really need your help and direction in dealing with this medical marijuana dispensary situation, where we have a proliferation of illegal clinics that are constantly opening. In my neighborhood alone, which is Heliotrope Melrose area, we just had one open on the corner there, right at the top of the street, which is 4326 Melrose Ave. I asked our senior lead officer to go in and check on it, see if it was legitimate or not. They're not legitimate. They closed for about a week after they got a cease and desist letter from the city attorney's office, and then because nobody's really putting actual pressure, they just opened right back up, and they've been open. One of the problems with this, especially in neighborhoods where there are families and businesses and such, are the people who are going in and out of these clinics, who, by the way, if you just go and stand outside one of these clinics, you'll notice that the majority of these people are not, you know, elderly women with glaucoma or, you know, cancer patients who are trying to deal with their nausea. They are thugs. They're criminals. They're people... Or they're people who just wanna get high and can get a card anywhere. So we have a problem where it's driving away families who wanna come and partake in ice cream on the neighborhood ice cream, you know, parlor that's right there, or the vegan restaurant that has families coming in and out of there, the coffee shop. It's right by the college. I know there's ordinances about how far away these clinics can be from schools. We just don't see the actual action, and we need help. We desperately need help.
Great. We'll get city staff out there, and we appreciate your comments on that as well. Jeffrey Brown is our next speaker. After that is Rocky Pelicino. Good morning. Good to see you.
Hi. Good morning, President Garcia, other members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I, as well, am a community member within Council District 13 in the East Hollywood neighborhood, and I'm a general committee member on the Public Safety Committee. And again, the issue at hand is these marijuana clinics and how detrimental they are to our neighborhoods. You did hear before how, you know, they are being... How everybody coming into them is not using it for medical marijuana. I'm a firm supporter of medical marijuana. I have an elderly friend who uses it, and it definitely helps with the pain that that person is dealing with. However, you know, school-aged children coming in and all of these clinics that are opening up illegally, it is just something that really, really has to be dealt with. It seems that some council districts are dealing with them and are having great success, and we certainly ask that there's just an across-the-board attack on these illegal dispensaries because... Excuse me, because they are hurting our communities greatly. They deter family business, and we're just asking that, you know, we get some clarity and some direction on this matter from you and the mayor's office.
Thank you. Let me state just publicly as well, 'cause we've had very clear pronouncements on this. There's... We've never told any police officers in the 13th Council District to not enforce that. We will continue to do that. There's no official or unofficial notice of any sort to say, "Do not crack down on those illegal ones." We've been very active and aggressive with that. We'll continue to work with you on those particular ones. Thank you for bringing those to our attention. Rocky Pelicino is our next speaker, and after that is Rebecca Ronquio. Good morning.
Good morning, President Garcia and city council members. First, I would like to introduce myself, Rocky Pelicino. I am an elected officer of the Sheet Metal Workers Local Union 105, and I also stand in to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to come before you and to share any of our sentiments that we have. Secondly, I would like to thank each and every one of you who participated last Friday evening, the retirement of outgoing executive director of L.A. Orange County Building Trades, Richard Slauson. It was one fabulous evening, and I can only say is that for each and every one of you that attended, including the mayor, we would like to thank you very, very much for being there. In closing, as an elected officer, who I represent many of Building Trades members throughout Los Angeles, especially in downtown, I stand and rise in support of Farmers Field. I, as an elected officer, I always enter into every conversation with an open mind, and I'm sure each and every one of you do also. I do not know any of you real personally, but I have read a number of things about each and every one of you, and I do find that you, as elected officials for the city of Los Angeles, do the same in by listening to the pros and cons on the debate of the future of building Farmers Field. I will say is that I will be coming, try to attend as many city council meetings if I can, and to stand before you and ask for your support in this upcoming project. In closing, I know there's always gonna be pros and cons, positives, negatives, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but I truly believe at this point, I must say, is that Farmers Field will bring nothing but a win-win situation for all of working-class America and also to the city of Los Angeles. Once again, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak before each and every one of you, and I applaud each and every one of you at this point that also agrees with us, yes, to Farmers Field. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rebecca Ronquio is our next speaker, and then we'll hear from Sung Jong Bong.
Good morning to you all. My name is Rebecca Ronquio, and I am with the Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance, and behind me is my... Part of my posse. We're here this morning to talk about the importance of green space. Being that I'm talking about Koreatown, obviously, we have been working on a project with the CRA, Mr. Weston's office, and of course, Michael Bay. We have worked really hard to be able to allocate some funding, and really, if it wasn't for this collective work, the community would have never seen, you know, the amount of money that's been allocated. But nevertheless, we still have a long way to go, not as long as it was before we started, so we just wanna ask you all for your support. And given that there's so many families and children out here, I think that we would all agree that green space and parks in low-income communities such as Koreatown and other areas of the city are very important. With that said, we're just here to celebrate that we've gotten this far, but also to remind us that there's a lot more to do, so we hope that we have you all's support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sung Jong Bong and John Woo Nam.
안녕하십니까? He doesn't speak English, so I'll translate. He said hi.
Hello.
저는 코리아타운 한국 노동년대에서 나온 미스터 봉입니다. My name is Mr. Bong. I came from Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance. 의원 여러분께서 저희들 공헌에 적극 힘써주신데 대한 고마움의 표시로 이곳에 섰습니다. I'd like to first thank all of you for supporting us and helping us to get some funds to start our project off. 저희들이 하고자 얻고자 구하고자 하는 곳에 의원 여러분들의 희망찬 미래가 있는 저희들의 꿈을 실현해 줄 것을 간곡히 부탁드리며 이만 끝을 주릴까 합니다. I'd like to thank you all for helping us realize our dream of maybe having a little green space in our concrete jungle, and I would also like to remind all of you that we're not done. We don't have the park yet. We just have some allocated money that we're very close, and that with your help, we're very, very positive and hoping that we could get this park. 여러분 의원 여러분들의 과정의 행복과 건강을 약속드리며 이만 물렀을까 합니다. I'd like to wish all of you good fortunes, as well as to your family's health, and I'd like to close by saying thank you all for helping us to this far.
감사합니다. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Woo Nam, does I speak?
Hi. My name is John Woo Nam. I'm a staff member of Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance. I'm also a resident of Koreatown. I live in, actually, CD 13, like Beverly and Normandy area, and... But I do work in the 8th and Hobart area, and 7th and Hobart is where we want to get the park. And I think we first started with trying to get a third of the lot, and we were successful in getting with Councilman Weston's help. We were successful in trying to get $5 million from the state. We got that fund. We just heard good news that the deputy, planning deputy, Michael Bay, told us that he's... We're able to allocate seven more million for that project. And when we were having a meeting ideas early this year at Councilman Weston's office, that he even, you know, offered maybe... Because Koreatown is so park poor, that maybe a third of the lot isn't enough, that we should go after the whole lot. And so, you know, we're here to ask, you know, continued support, because that whole lot... Because Koreatown is such a, you know, high real estate area, that even, you know, with the $7 million and the $5 million, it's not enough to get the whole lot, and, you know? But, you know, it's better than nothing, and we are very, very close. We only need a little bit more, and we would like everyone's support in this. And we would also like to thank all the people who came to our town hall in the, like, in January of this year. I think President Garcia was there, as well as Councilman Reyes and Councilman Labonge. And, you know, Koreatown needs green space, like everyone else. Koreatown is a very low-income area, although we have lots of businesses, and would like to thank you for your support and to ask for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Our next speakers are going to be in Van Nuys. First Donna Pearman, then Miriam Fogler, and then William Sizemore in our Van Nuys chambers. Good morning to you all.
Okay. Good morning. Hello. Eric Garcia, president of the CRA Council. Eventually, of course, you're gonna have to get to those gun issues, and we'll be here. I agree with Rick Nightingale about Van Nuys Boulevard, bus-only lane. So it really hurt businesses and restaurants. First, where will they park? And two, it will be hard for those who drive. They will not drive down Van Nuys Boulevard looking for a place to eat or doing business, so they will go elsewhere. Well, it'll hurt Burger King a lot, 'cause they're on... Anyway, Supo Park Boulevard, where you better idea for a bus-only lane. I forgot to mention, DWP should be given concessions before anyone else, since they never sacrifice. They make, I think, believe more... 40% more than sanitation. It's not right. Of course, city workers, more than city workers. And of course, also, CRA staff should feel a pinch. The rest of us sacrifice, not these two. CRA gets a private agency, but it gets public money to operate. They're not exempt in my eyes. Politicians want to divert us and find scapegoats to blame for the deficit, so they let others point to public employees. We have a deficit because our politicians overspend on projects, pure and simple. It's no-brainer. CRA is one of them. They want people to go after each other. We shouldn't get involved with Libya. Let NATO do it. We will not gain anything. President Obama doesn't care what costs us like billions a month. We might shut down government, and we're spending money over there in Libya. It's crazy. Hurting the poorest... We shut down government, hurting the poorest and needy who depend on it, who depend on Social Security Disability and the SSI. Stop wasteful spending, fraud and abuse. We need to have the politicians and stop overspending and stop spending on these projects they think are cute, like green projects and the CRA. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, then William Sizemore. Good morning. Hope you're doing all right, Miriam. We missed you yesterday.
Oh, thank you. You're all... I'm nothing personal against you, but you're, you know, your spending is all hot air. The CRA projects are not going to be backed financially, and I want Moody's to know that the City of L.A. keeps spending, and they're spending your credit that you're giving them, and they're not being responsible about it. I've been up here time and time again, they put these projects through, and then they go after, you know, scapegoats to get more money from benefits, like the Republicans are going after now the hard-working middle class of this country. And let me tell you, it's the big businesses that they're helping, that's who they want to help. They balance transfer the money from the public to the private sector, and that's exactly what they're doing. And they're trickling down all the benefits now from the public. They did it to the private, now they want to get rid of the public. They did it, you know, I have a friend that had a benefit. She lost her retirement in the private industry, folks. They don't think private industry is so wonderful either. They both have problems, but that doesn't mean the city, that means that the politicians should have to take their benefits away from one group to make the other group happy. Can't do that. So, I'm a disapprove of the us going over here with Obama being, taking orders from Hillary to go bomb Bolivia, and then expect us here to have our gun rights be taken away when fact is that he said that he might want to give arms to them. We don't know who they are. Are they going to help our terrorists? You're asking us to give up our gun? No way. We can't do it. I lost family in Holocaust. Never again. Secondly, DWP needs to sacrifice.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler.
And we need to stop balance transferring the money from DWP to the city.
William Sizemore is our next speaker. After that is Todd LaDale. Good morning.
Morning, Council. I'm William Sizemore, an unemployed IBW electrician. I'm here in support of the Farmers Field project, which will stimulate the economy and get construction trades back on its feet, create more jobs after construction for further growth of L.A. Let's bring jobs back to L.A. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience this morning. Todd LaDale is our next speaker. After that, we'll come back to Council Chambers and Greg Basham. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Council. My name's Todd Liebel. I'm with IBW Local 11, and I'm in support of Farmers Field. I'm currently unemployed, and this job will provide plenty of employment for a lot of workers that are currently out of work. It's going to definitely be a kickstart for the economy in this area, and really give us what we need to stimulate our economy. So I'm asking for city council support in the Farmers Field. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaDale. I'm hanging there. Greg Basham is our next speaker here in Council Chambers. After that, we'll go back, then David Hernandez will speak next in Van Nuys. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Greg Basham. I'm a local representative with Tumster's Local 986, and I'm here to speak on Farmers Field also. We have a lot of construction workers that we represent at our local, and we have a lot of convention workers that we represent, parking attendants. This project, which we've been told is going to be at no cost to the city, would greatly benefit those workers that are either working very limited hours or possibly even laid off completely. So I'm just here to ask for the support of the city council members. When that comes before you, please vote in favor of Farmers Field. Thank you for the time, and I know you're way over.
No, don't worry. Thank you. We're happy to keep going. David Hernandez in Van Nuys is our next speaker, then Ben Fortson back here in chambers. Good morning, Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning. Good morning, Council members, and good morning in Los Angeles. It seems like we have a lot of the familiar issues in front of us today, but today is a very special day, and I just wanted to take a moment so that we don't let this day go by without recognition. And this is a resolution that was passed by the city council in March 30, 2008, thanks to Councilmember Tony Cardenas and Bernard Parks. And I'll read it briefly. Whereas the Vietnam War was fought in Vietnam from 1961 to 1975, and involved in North Vietnam and the Viet Cong, the United States Armed Forces, and South Vietnam, and whereas the United States became involved in Vietnam because the policymakers in the United States believed that if the South Vietnam, if South Vietnam fell to the communist government, then communism would spread throughout the rest of Southeast Asia. Whereas members of the United Armed Forces began serving in an advisory role to the South Vietnamese in 1961, and whereas the result of the Gulf of Tonkin incidents of August 2nd and 4th, 1964, Congress overwhelmingly passed the Gulf of Tonkin Resolution on August 7, 1964. And I'll jump to whereas in 1965, United States Armed Forces ground combat units arrived in Vietnam, and whereas by the end of 1965, there were 80,000 U.S. troops in Vietnam, and by 1969, approximately 543,000. And I'll jump to whereas on March 30, 1973, the United States Armed Forces completed the withdrawal combat troops from Vietnam, and I'll skip down to with the establishment, the Congress passed a bill, Resolution 189, would establish a nationally-recognized holiday to honor Vietnam veterans, whereas the establishment of a Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day would be an appropriate way to honor those members of the United States Armed Forces who served in Vietnam. Whereas March 30 would be appropriate date to establish as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Los Angeles hereby declares March 30, 2008, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of Los Angeles to honor those members of the United Armed Forces who served in Vietnam. Thank you, Councilmember Tony Cardenas, Bernard Parks, and the rest of the council that passed this resolution. And I would like to welcome all of you to participate in creating an event for next year, so that we'll have a little bit more than just me standing up here reading the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Appreciate it, and thank you for doing that. Ben Fortson is our next speaker here, and then we'll go back, and Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys will be next. Good morning, sir.
How you doing? On February 11, 2011, my fiancee and I became the victims of a racially motivated hate crime committed by Ryan McKenzie. We soon discovered that Mackenzie's have a close ties to Southwest Division located on Martin Luther King Boulevard, and we soon discovered and seen at the scene that, discovered at the scene, that, you know, a conspiracy was taking place. I discovered on, I discovered 3/29 yesterday that Detective Rodriguez was handling the case. He submitted the case on 3/10. It came back, rejected 3/10. However, on 3/14, he went over to one of Mackenzie's victims' house to view a video. Since when do you submit a case to the district attorney's office and your investigation is not complete? Since when? It's going to clearly show, I got audio, I have an audiotape of Detective Rodriguez ignoring the facts that this individual, this sick racist individual, has a tendency and a history of committing hate crimes towards people. He calls this individual faggots all the time, because he, Mackenzie believes in his mind that he's gay, so he harasses him, he's harassing, he's motivated.
Sir, you have the ability to say that, but I would just ask, there's some children that are here.
This is what, this is what, this, one of Mackenzie's victims is telling Rodriguez, and Rodriguez is ignoring the fact. I got videotape. Does anyone want to see these, hear this videotape? I got, I got, I have, I mean, I have audiotape and videotape of Detective Rodriguez ignoring these facts, that he victimizes old people, which is motivated by hate, which is a hate crime. He victimizes him because he thinks he's homosexual or gay. He victimizes me and my fiancee because he considers us two niggers, and this is what's going on here. It's a cover-up, and I'd like, and I'd like somebody to view this videotape. View the videotape, listen to the audiotape, please.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments this morning. Rick Nightingale is our next speaker in Van Nuys, and Michael Carrion back here in Council Chambers. Good morning, Mr. Nightingale.
Good morning, Rick Nightingale. I'll tell you, this regarding this, the prison guards and so forth, that if they turn around and get caught doing something wrong, they should automatically be fired. Regarding cell phones, it was in the paper, from our governor turned around and didn't say anything about this, that how many cell phones are in the prisons, and the guards are getting a thousand dollars a cellphone. You know how much damage that these people can do, and that's in county jails and so forth. If any guard gets caught turning, giving somebody a cellphone, they should automatically be fired, and none of their benefits to be given to them. That is outrageous when they do that. Nothing, when they negotiate their contract, was said anything about that. And you talk about a crime? I, it's just unbelievable. And then regarding the guards getting, it's called walking the line, as they call it, that you get paid from the time you drive in the driveway to when you go up to work. And they won't go through a metal detector for these cell phones, because they turn around, and it'll take longer. Like I told you before, I was in construction, we had to turn around sometimes, it'd take us 15 minutes or more to walk to the job, to the high rises downtown, because we didn't, there was no untied parking. Where do we get our benefits out of this thing? I have no idea. And I'll just tell you, IBW is getting, is kind of mad at me, I say too much stuff. I am a retired IBW worker. Yeah, I'm after DWP's IBW members. When they get caught drinking, coming out of a bar and so forth, they should be fired. If you don't like it, too bad. If you worked on my job, I caught people drinking on my site, I fired them. Not suitable for rehire. If you don't like it, that's the way I was brought up, too bad. Get a life, straighten up, and make an example out of you. That's the only thing you can possibly do, and with your name. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Michael Carrion is next. After that is Walter Bechtel, and then Kevin Allen. Good morning, sir.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Nightingale. If you've got a city employee driving a city vehicle, and he's drunk, you got to fire him. We all knew who that was. The City of Los Angeles is broke. You want to save some money, start ticketing the police officers that are parked illegally. Collect the money, it's revenue. There's a dozen right here outside. Instead of laying people off, you want to make some money? Don't let police officers take the vehicles home just because they're high-ranking officers. Let them drive their own vehicles. That's our tax-paying dollars we're wasting. If they don't live in the City of Los Angeles, let them drive their own vehicles. You want to bring revenue back to the city? You want to bring taxes back to the city? Bring the officers back to the city. If they don't live in the city, they shouldn't drive vehicles all the way out to Lancaster, Palmdale, all the way out to West Covina, all the way out to Chino Hills. Ninety-five percent of your police officers do not live in the City of Los Angeles, but they're driving our vehicles home under our gas, our maintenance, and everything else. Somebody's going to stand up and say, but we need this. What do they do? They don't do anything. If you want to give them a vehicle, give them a Pinto. Let them drive that home, give them a Prius. They can drive that home, they don't need Crown Victorias for one person to drive all day. But again, we got abuse. We talk about, bow, be careful, City of Los Angeles, you're next, okay? If you don't cite the Police Department, you're defrauding the City of Los Angeles out of income. And you know it, I brought this to you several times, nobody's gotten up and did nothing about it. Finally, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Weeser, Mr. Chris are doing something about it. And it's a shame that you put the burden on taxpayers for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. After that is Kevin Allen.
Good morning. I want to talk about the football stadium too. My name is Bechtel, and you people never seem to listen to us. It's none of our, my family's nuclear facilities have ever had any problems. You don't listen to us the way we say to make things and do something. I'm saying that there's nothing wrong with a football stadium. The problem is the congestion and where it ought to be placed. It's not where construction workers want to make something, it's where the football team wants to be. It's the more practical place to be, which is out towards the Lancaster area. The question is, how much is that, the money going to, they said it's already been paid for privately, and now there's a question of whether or not it's going to be paid privately. Why don't we settle that question and put the thing out towards Lancaster, where the land is, I think, a third as cheap as it is here in the city? Furthermore, it's more conducive to where the people who play football want to play. This is not for the construction workers. The construction workers are saying, well, I don't want to build out of Lancaster, it's too hot, it gets up to 110 degrees. Well, we know people that have been working in Iraq and out towards the high desert where it gets up to 120 degrees. You know, big deal. Why don't you put this, this is not for the construction workers, this is for the people that are playing the football. Football is played during the winter months, between November and January, and it snows up in Lancaster. It don't snow in downtown Los Angeles. It just don't make sense to put this thing in downtown Los Angeles, there's too many reasons not to, but don't scuttle the project, just put it somewhere else out towards Lancaster area, and that seems to be the solution to the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Our next speaker is Kevin Allen, and then George Veal III. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Council members, President Garcetti, other members also. My name is Kevin Allen, I'm currently out of Local 78, and I'm here in support of Farmer Stadium also. I've been out of work currently for 18 months. It's tough out here, you know. I usually go down to this place called House of Diamonds on Friday. I can't even go down there no more, you know? So just getting tough out here, just be best if we can get some work in the City of Los Angeles, so I can pay my bills, put food on my table for my family, and most of all, I just want to get back to work. So I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck, and thank you for your patience this morning. George Veal III is our last speaker for our general public comment today. Good morning, sir.
Hello, Council members. My name is George Veal. I'm with Local 78, Los Angeles here, union. I've been unemployed for about two years, off and on, and so I am supportive of the football stadium. And if this stadium is considered and it's approved, then it would mean that I can get back to work and have more consistent work. I appreciate your consideration for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you everybody for your testimony and our general public comment. We'll next turn to item 27 to take out of order if we can reconsider 27. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council Presidents. I'd like to invite Councilperson Perry, Councilwoman Cardenas, Councilwoman Garcetti, if you wish, to join me at the podium. And I believe Councilor Khan might be on his way, I'm not sure. But colleagues, I want to thank you for allowing this presentation, this resolution. I want to welcome some very distinguished people who are joining us today. Carlos Vakirano from the Salvadoran Legal Education Defense Fund, SALIF. Walter Duran, Council General for El Salvador. Dr. Albert Pacheco from Quinca Romero. Monteguero Romero's Charter School Representative, Nora Sandoval. And Dixon Singerlin, Executive Director of the Youth Policy Institute. Colleagues, this tribute is for Monteguero Oscar A. Romero, celebrating his 31st anniversary. "If they kill me, I will rise again in the Salvadoran people." These were the words of Archbishop Oscar Romero. Every March, SALIF and the Central American Council celebrate the life and work of Monteguero Oscar A. Romero. As Archbishop of the Salvadoran Roman Catholic Church, he witnessed ongoing violations of human rights and started a group which spoke out on behalf of the poor and other victims of the country's civil war. He embraced a nonviolent form of theology, a position which led to comparisons to Muhammad Gandhi and Martin Luther King. In 1980, he was assassinated by the Salvadoran army, as he held the consecrated host up during Mass. In 1997, a cause for beatification and canonization into sainthood was opened for Monteguero Romero, and Pope John Paul II bestowed upon him the title of servant of God. The process continues. He's considered by some the unofficial patron of America's. Earlier this month, President Obama visited his grave in San Salvador and made a call for his canonization. Colleagues, in my past 20 years, 10 years as a deputy and 10 years as a council member, I have seen the struggles of Salvadoran community as they organize social services, educational funds, business corridors, entrepreneurs that have become involved in our economy, both locally, statewide, and nationally. And I believe... And I believe that the Salvadoran and Central American people in Los Angeles serve as a testimony of Monteguero Romero's legacy. Thirty-one years after his death, and many miles away from their homeland, many in Los Angeles come together to celebrate his life and make a commitment to furthering his vision of peaceful, just, a peaceful and just world. The city of Los Angeles now joins you as you celebrate the fruits of this work and vow to fight for a society free of discrimination and violence. I thank all of you for reminding us of Monteguero Romero's transforming words and legacy. And Councilman Weisar, would you please like to join us? I'd like to introduce my colleagues, our Council President, President Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you so much for doing such an extraordinary job of representing all Angelenos, in particular Central American community, and Pico Union, MacArthur Park, Westlake area. With you I share, and with everybody here, Ms. Perry has a huge population of Salvadorans in San Fernando Valley as well now, really a community that has transformed the face of Los Angeles and that fled war, fled hardship, and that each year recognizes the greatest, perhaps, national hero, Oscar Romero. I was never prouder of our president of our country when, originally unscheduled, the president changed his, the plans for his recent trip to Latin America, his first as president, to visit the grave of Oscar Romero. It's a place that I've been when we traveled to San Salvador to set up our sister-city agreement with that city. And it's a place that here so many institutions bear the name of this great man. Very proud to have the Clinic, Oscar Romero Clinic, in my district, Clinica Oscar Romero. To recently have had the school that bears his name, which has now moved, I believe, to Mr. Reyes's district. But also to see and to know that there are generation after generation of young Salvadoran Americans, Latinos, and Angelenos of every age, ethnicity, and background, who learn the story of this man. Archbishop Romero was a man of peace, he was a man of God, and he was a man of justice. And the bravery which he exhibited is an example of the human spirit. It's something that we celebrate, that no matter where you are, and it's a lesson well reminded today, when we see around the world people standing up against tyranny, we see people literally being shot at and bombed at in the Middle East, we see people who face human rights violations, we see the deaths of religious leaders and others throughout the world. Oscar Romero stands as testament as the man who helped liberate a country, and certainly we join with the community today to recognize that for all of humanity.
That's called my colleague, Councilman John Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Who would have predicted that this man, this man who came from very humble beginnings, would still resonate in our lives and in our society today? He went to a government school until the third grade and then was privately tutored until the age of 13. His father was a carpenter and trained him to become a skilled carpenter, because that was the best way to gain employment in El Salvador at the time. But he wanted to become a Catholic priest and went to Rome in 1942 and remained in Italy and got a doctorate degree in theology. During the war, he began to travel back and en route with stops in Spain and Cuba. He was detained by the Cuban police with his colleague, because they had just come from Italy and Mussolini was in power at the time, and placed in an internment camp for a while. And through a lot of help through his church and his order, he was able to be released and to come back home to El Salvador, where he worked as a parish priest, and then moved to San Miguel, where he performed service for over 20 years. What I didn't know about him, which I find very interesting, is that he had been the director of the Archdiocese newspaper, Orientacion, which was a fairly conservative newspaper in its posture in defending the traditional principles of the Catholic Church. But what is most resonating, I think, worldwide, is the great respect his name and his image and the body of work that he has left us still resonates throughout the world. He's considered to be one of 10 20th-century martyrs who are depicted in statues above the Great West Door of Westminster Abbey in London. And I think it's a living, a long-lasting, permanent testament to the impact that he had worldwide.
Thank you, Councilman Perry, Councilman Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Thirty-one years that this man's life was taken, but I sit here, I stand here smiling at all of the humble people that I've witnessed or have read about or have known in my life, who, whether they had a first-grade education and saved people's lives, whether they had an eighth-grade education and actually pulled thousands upon thousands and eventually affected millions of lives, like tomorrow's celebration of Cesar Chavez will commemorate. There are many people, I don't wanna call them martyrs, I just wanna call them leaders. It's unfortunate that for too many people in this world who have stood above the crowd and have decided that they were gonna put everything else aside, their personal belongings, any potential for personal wealth, they would actually put their lives at risk, actually enduring political harm, enduring physical harm, and in some cases, such as with Oscar Romero, someone took his life because he stood up for nameless, faceless people that he never met. I think that this moment should be a moment of reflection and understanding that if we look at the best of each and every one of us within ourselves, it's an opportunity for us to challenge ourselves, to stand for what is right, instead of worry about what could happen to us. To be able to see an injustice and stand for what is right, instead of worrying about what someone can do to us, or what could happen to us as an individual. It's that kind of person that we commemorate today. And whether the person was able to attain a doctorate degree, or the person was never afforded the opportunity for formal education, it's not the education that makes the person the person that Oscar Romero was when he was here. It's actually what an individual is willing to bring out in themselves. So I think that this moment today is an opportunity for the city of Los Angeles to celebrate this man, but also to understand that perhaps we should be inspired to allow ourselves to be more like him. To give of ourselves and to be willing to endure, to be willing to sacrifice, to be willing to put ourselves and our personal interests aside for that of the greater good. There are not enough people that we can honor like this, unfortunately. But hopefully, we can be inspired, not for the purpose of being honored. We can be inspired for the purpose of being able to say to ourselves and for people to say about us that we stood for something. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cardenas, Councilman Weisar.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Reyes. And here in Los Angeles, where we have the largest number of Salvadorans outside of El Salvador, it's only right and just that we recognize one of the individuals that has made a huge difference in the lives of thousands of Salvadorans. But even if Archbishop Oscar Romero wasn't Salvadoran, we would still be celebrating an individual who stood up for human rights, an individual who many of us probably would not dare to do what he did. When he would stand at his churches and his masses, and you have armed men looking at you, and you still condemn those men for their actions, and be willing to stand up and say what is right and speak the truth, many of us would not be willing to do that. This individual did that. And that's why, right now, through the Catholic Church, there's a canonization process that's still going on. In my wrist, I have a number of saints that have gone on and been canonized because of their godlike actions on this earth. Oscar Romero was that person. He stood up for what was right, and he spoke the truth when many of us wouldn't. And here in Los Angeles, it's also a right that we have a school named after him, that our young people will continue to know what Oscar Romero stood for, whether he was Salvadoran, a Catholic, whatever race, whatever religion he was. There's very few individuals who can and would be able to do what Archbishop Oscar Romero did. So I think on this day, as my colleague Cardenas mentioned, it's a time of reflection on what it means to stand up, say what's right, and do what's right, and also to protect the rights of all individuals, no matter where you come from on this planet. Thank you all for bringing this to our attention, and thank you to the students who are here with us today as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Weisar.
Mr. Reyes.
I would like to ask us to recognize the parents that made the trip here to City Hall, the leaders that are here from the Salvadoran community, the children of Oscar Romero Charter School. Let's give him a round of applause for the presence. Make your copy. I'd like to give you Carlos Vaquirano. Then I'll ask my colleagues, who'd like to speak, after Carlos Vaquirano.
Buenos dias, good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Reyes, for your leadership. Councilmember Eric Garcetti, thank you for also taking the lead in establishing the sister-city relationship between Los Angeles and San Salvador five years ago. Councilman Tom LaVoyne, for your leadership with the sister-city associations. And all the members of the council, for those who have gone to El Salvador, I wanna thank you, because it's a way of learning not only about Monsieur Romero, Monsieur Romero, but also about the country, the history, and the Salvadoran community, and our contributions to this great city. And I hope the other members can join us in the future. I wanna read a little bit about Monsieur Romero, I believe these were the last words that he said in public. He read this before, "Brothers," and this was toward the soldiers, "you came from our own people. You are killing your own brothers. Any human order to kill must be subordinate to the law of God, which says, 'For sure not kill.' No soldier is obliged to obey an order contrary to the law of God. No one has to obey an immoral law. It is high time you obey your consciences rather than sinful orders. The church cannot remain silent before such an abomination. In the name of God, in the name of the suffering people, whose cry rises to heaven more loudly each day, I implore you, I beg you, I order you..." Start the repression. The day after, he was assassinated by the right-wing military. So we're here today to celebrate his 31st anniversary, and I'm so happy to see the leadership in this place, the City Hall of Los Angeles. And I was there last week when President Obama visited his tomb. And I think that was a way of pressing his support, the first time that a president of the United States come and visit, you know, the Monsieur Romero tomb in El Salvador. I think, what else can we ask? I mean, he is saying, Monsieur Romero is a war leader, and we hope that his teachings and his philosophy in human rights, social justice, will continue. And as we can see, the children of the Monsieur Romero Charter School are here, they are learning about Monsieur Romero. The parents from the schools are here, and my hope is that future generations will continue to respect and to follow Monsieur Romero's life and philosophy. So thank you again for celebrating Monsieur Romero's life, and I hope that you, as a council leaders, can continue supporting his life and also the Salvadoran community, and to commit to social justice in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Mr. LaVoyne.
Mr. Reyes, as always, thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I remember when you all went down to make a sister-city, which is so important. And it's good to see the students here, who've been sitting a long time, so I know this is very special, and their teachers, which is so, and the mothers, and the whole situation. I just wanted to stand for all the nuns and all the priests in the world who went somewhere to do something for somebody, and all the rabbis and all the other ministers who've done it. But also, also in this particular case here, it started quite a bit of change, which was for the good. And I've been to San Salvador, I've been to our sister-city, I swam in the San Anna Lake, and I speak of the times that I was there and hope to go back again. But it's great that we have a role model here, and it's great we recognize this. And again, Mr. Reyes, I wanna thank you, as always, framing it in such a way. And Carlos, thank you for your leadership on the Sister City Committee. Welcome to City Hall. Thank you.
Mr. Carrion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I very well remember that day in 1980. I was a college student working on Salvadoran human rights issues, and it was such a shocking moment when Oscar Romero was shot down in front of his church. But I was so moved by what Mr. Cardenas said, because I can remember that day, being horrified by the incident, but also realizing that that was the day that the people of El Salvador won their liberty. That day. Because as the Chilean dictator, Augusto Pinochet, once said, "We've got nothing against ideas. We don't fear ideas. It's the people who spread ideas that are the problem." And that was who Oscar Romero was, because he took the ideas of Christian values, translated them into political imperatives for the people of El Salvador. And when he was assassinated, he went beyond just spreading those ideas, and he became the embodiment of those ideas that the people throughout the world, not just the people of El Salvador, but the people throughout the world, could finally understand what the people of El Salvador had been experiencing under the dictatorship, under the yoke of tyranny that they'd borne for far too long. So when he died, he died for the people of El Salvador, but he died for everyone who stands up for human justice and dignity everywhere throughout the world.
Thank you, Councilman Carrion. Now therefore be resolved that the Los Angeles City Council, in the spirit of the sister-city relationship, the city of San Salvador hereby urges the government, the Legislative Assembly, the Supreme Court of El Salvador to bring to justice those responsible for the assassination of Archbishop of San Salvador, Oscar A. Romero. Before the resolve at the LA City Council, does hereby declare March 24th, 2011, as day of remembrance of Archbishop Romero of El Salvador on occasion of 31st anniversary of his martyrdom. I'd like to present this to the leadership, Salvadoran community, Carlos Vaquirano and company. Muchas gracias por estar aquí, por sus esfuerzos, los sacrificios, es en esta ciudad la más que se puede hacer, tu mundo ciudad internacional. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Perry, Mr. Weisar, Mr. Cardenas. We will vote on this matter now. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us back to item number seven.
Why don't we hold that and move to the next one?
Very good. That brings us to item number 10, called Special for Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, number 10, sir, we have one card. Mr. Sax.
Public hearing was held.
Can we bring 10, 11, 12, and 13 together? You want 10, 11, 12, 13?
Yes, sir.
10, 11, 12, 13?
There are some controller information.
We have some cards on the others, Mr. Clerk. All public hearings held and everything? 10, 11, 12, and 13? Public hearing was held in committee, so we will then forego the public hearing here, since we already had it. Mr. Parks, 10, 11, 12, 13? The hearing was already held, so...
Okay. Colleagues, we're gonna have Matisse from the Controller's Office to give a very brief overview, primarily concentrating on items 11, 12, and 13, to give a brief verbal report that was given in committee. that was given in committee.
Good morning, councilmembers. Matias Farfán with the Office of the Controller. Before you are items 10 through 13. Item number 11 is the year-end reserve fund borrowing memo the Controller sent. This one pretty much has to do with the Controller notifying council that annually the Controller will come to council requesting authority to borrow at year-end from the reserve fund in order to expedite the closing of the year, the fiscal year. This year, the Controller plans on doing the same, but the Controller will put some restrictions on that borrowing. And that's simply because every year at year-end, some departments do exceed their appropriations. They're usually minor appropriation, you know, overages. And it would be very problematic, it would cause much delay if those departments had to come to the council to ask permission each time to move those funds around. But this time, since there was some large overages projected in the salary accounts, this year, when she comes forward, there will be some restrictions on that request. On the number, item number 12 is the March One Letter, which is the annual letter that the Controller sends to the mayor and submits a copy to the council. This letter pretty much reports estimated revenues for the current fiscal year and estimated revenues for next fiscal year.
Excuse me. Sergeant Arms, can you quiet down the chambers, please? It's difficult to hear with everyone speaking.
Yes. Okay. And the Controller did meet with five local economists in preparing this year's revenue estimates. We also reviewed several independent forecasts. The good news is that there's a consensus that we have hit rock bottom as far as the local economy goes. The bad news is that it will be a slow and sluggish recovery. Therefore, in the current year, the revised revenue estimates are below what was in the adopted budget, which has been reported to you in the financial status reports released by the CAO. Unfortunately, next year's revenue is based on that revised downward base. So next year's revenues will likely be also below the current year adopted budget. So there won't be more money to offset shortfalls that have been projected in the past. And then the last one is item number 13, which is the Condition of All City Funds, which is simply the annual audit performed by the city's external auditor, Simpson and Simpson, in which the cash balances of all city funds are reported. This year, the bank balance is total 108.8 million. The general pool is 6.1 billion, and the special pool's total 964 million, for a total of 7.1 billion. That said, if you have any questions...
Colleagues, just want to bring your attention to a couple of things on item number 11. The change there is going to be that rather than fill the gap where departments might be on a shortfall, the Controller is going to wait until the council makes a proactive request. And so you and your policy committees, when you're talking to those department heads, if you're aware that they are in shortfall, that we really need to emphasize that they bring their budget in line. Because what will occur, if the council does not take proactive action, we could end up with employees not being paid. And so that's a major shift as relates to the Controller, that normally did this automatically, is now saying that she will not do it without a directive from the council. Also, on number 12, it is very important to review some of the projections by the economists so you can have a sense as the budget gets started as to what and why some of the recommendations are being made. And particularly to look at page three that talks about the projections of revenue, because these are very important numbers as we set the starting point for this year's budget for 11, 12. And so those are the highlights. We'd ask that items 10 through 13 be approved and that we... But again, hopefully, colleagues, your staffs will make themselves familiar with this information so that as questions come up, that you'll be able to respond to them. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any comments from the floor? Scene done. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
That brings us to item number 19, called Special for Councilmember LaVoye.
Mr. LaVoye.
Could I have Mr. Wickham from the CLA's office in the center?
CLA, please come to the center table.
Mr. Wickham, please give us a brief rundown of what's before us.
John Wickham with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. We have before you several recommendations to kickstart the redistricting process for the Los Angeles City Council and the Los Angeles Unified School District Board of Education. This is a charter-required process. Every 10 years, when census data are released, the city council districts and the board of education districts need to be reviewed and revised. The charter requires that a commission be created, an independent commission be created to...
Give us the timelines as you speak.
The commissioners should be in place by October, September of this year, 2011. The commissions will need to prepare and present to the city council new plans by March 1st, 2012. And the council will need to adopt new plans by June, July 1st, 2012.
2012. And then at that time, then whatever's set, that'd be for the 2013 electorate?
Yes, they will.
For both the unified district and for...
The city council.
Correct. Good.
Yes.
And there'll be staff. It's budgeted. We haven't funded?
We have been speaking to the CAO's office and the mayor's office about a budget request for the next fiscal year. And there will be staff hired by the commissions. There will be independent staff. They will assist the commissions in their work. And then when it comes over to the council side, your CLA and city staff will participate in that.
Got it. And the growth population for Los Angeles from 2000, give us a little synopsis on that, two years from 2010.
We're still looking at the numbers and trying to compare them. What we do know is that the population of the city of Los Angeles on April 1st, 2010, was 3,792,621. That means that each of the 15 council districts should have about 253,000 people in them.
So we're not 4 million people?
We're not 4 million people yet.
We're not 4... Well, what were we before? Once we hit 4 million, right?
Yeah, I think we were about 3.5, 3.6 million in 2000, and so our population growth is very slow.
I got science, it said 4 million, yeah.
About 253,000, yeah.
So this is news, that we're not 4 million. Yeah, I always say before... What do you say we are, John?
You know, I thought we were getting close to four, too. I think the State Department of Finance was saying that we were near four. But with the recession and with, you know, population changes, and one of the other issues is the Census Bureau did not do an estimate of the undercount in 2010. So we don't have any data that will help us determine what the degree of the undercount was.
So this is significant, because if we had 4 million, the federal government would look at us differently than if we have 3.7 million?
Yeah. The official number is 3.8 million, about.
3.8 million. Is it illegal, Mr. City Attorney, if I see there's over 4 million people in this city?
It'd just be seen as your interpretation of the facts.
Interpretation of the facts, boy. I think there's 4 million, there's 4,118 less, Mr. City Attorney, as far as I can discern, that's you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wickham.
Thank you.
Mr. LaVoye, Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. LaVoye, for calling this special. My apologies while I was out of the room. We put forward for rules on election the process that will govern redistricting. Last time, under Ms. Hahn and Mr. Zine's Charter Commission recommendation, we actually put forward the Citizens Commission, as was mentioned, the first time. Last time, in 2001, 2002, it was the first time the Citizens Commission made a recommendation, and I think 95, 98 percent, something, almost all of the plan that they put forward, because some cynics out there may say, oh, well, they make recommendations, but council still has the power, and they're just going to change it for their needs and their likings. We actually adhered almost, you know, maybe less than 10 percent of it was changed, probably actually 3 or 4 percent of it was changed by the council. And we really adhered to what the Citizen Commission did. Each one of you will have an appointment to the Citizen Commission. We're waiting the more robust data filed that'll come probably in August. But each one of you should start giving some thought to a representative who will be on this. The mayor gets three. I'll have two as council president. The city attorney and city controller will each have one as well. Furthermore, we also will have the school district redistricting, which we oversee from the city in appointing that commission with the members of the school board. And this is two great opportunities for communities of interest to come together and to talk about how redistricting should occur. I know, Mr. LaVoye, there are 4 million, because you've met them all, right? And actually talked to them. But officially, we only have 3.75 million. And what's interesting is the initial data shows which districts lost and gained the most. Mr. Zine actually gained the most people in his district. He went up about 10 percent from 250,000 to about 275. My district had the biggest drop, about the same amount, down about 25,000, which means his district will have to shrink, mine will have to grow, so that we have even amounts. And when you look at each one of these, versus Mr. LaVoye, stayed pretty even, lost about 5,000. Mr. Weisar, this was from the Downtown Blog, they went through it, but we will be getting some of this data from our CLA. Went down almost 20,000 to 232,000, so you'll grow as well. Council District 15 added about 13,000 people. 12 added about 11,000 people. 11 added about 14,000 people. 10 went down about 10,000 people. Ms. Perry's district went up quite dramatically as well, to about 11,000 people. So as you look at this and look at the districts, it'll be important to sift through that and to figure out, we need to keep neighborhoods together as much as possible where that's the desire. We have communities of interest in terms of civil rights suits in the past, and making sure there's ethnic representation. And I know that the Asian Pacific Islander community is very engaged and involved, the Latino community, the African American community, in those communities of interest. And my plan is to constitute that commission in the end of August, beginning of September, have those meetings. They have a plan that has to then come to us around March. And we have till June 30th of next year to pass a final plan, which will go to the mayor, subject to his veto and/or our override. That will be the new council districts for the city of Los Angeles. So I will make copies of this so folks can see what's happening in their district. We'll work with the CLA as we get more data. I think we have ethnic data, too, right now, right?
Yes.
So we can get the ethnicity of people's districts and see how that's changed from 10 years ago. And in the meantime, we ask you for your support as we move this open, transparent process forward. And we want you to start thinking about who you want in those meetings. And anybody who wasn't here last time, they went through so many public meetings in so many different parts of the city, and we will replicate that again. And literally, we had probably tens of thousands of people literally come out to participate in, and we hope the same thing will happen this time around. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. There are no further speakers in the queue on this item. Mr. Clerk, what is the action to be taken today?
Madam President, before you is the communication from the chair of the Rules and Elections Committee.
All right. So do we want to note and file that?
No, ma'am. I believe the council would like to adopt the recommendations contained within the communication.
All right. Let's open the file. I'm sorry, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes. Next item.
That brings us to item 23, called Special for Cards.
All right. Arnold Sax?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sax. Just pretty quickly, funding from the Sunshine County landfill. Another alternative to CRA redevelopment funding, because there is no CRA redevelopment area in this council district. They're located in the blighted areas. But you see the use of this fund for median work. Why can't CRA funding be used in the same manner in blighted areas?
Thank you very much. There are no speakers in the queue on this item, so, Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, next item.
Madam President, that brings us to item number seven, called Special for Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. The item before us is to assist our city employees who are called up to active duty. And Operation New Dawn is the operation that's replaced Operation Iraqi Freedom. And what this will do is make sure that city employees who are activated will have the compensation, the balance between what the military pays and what their salary, so it'll be equal, to make sure that they have their medical, dental, life insurance coverage, and that their family doesn't have to suffer because they've been activated by the United States military. So this shows support, continuation support for our city employees, any and all city employees who are called up to active duty. This maintains their salary, the benefits, so there is no loss to them or their families. So we'd encourage an eye vote, and I'll show support for our United States military.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine.
As we've always done, as Mr. Smith has always done this, just a continuation. And they charge... The reason we're doing this is because it went from Operation, went to a new operation, New Dawn, and that's the reason. From Operation Iraqi Freedom to New Dawn, so we had to do a new ordinance. That's what it's about, the continuation to support the military.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. And of course, it's a very important issue. I believe I introduced a motion during one of the operations. My question is, do we really have to do a new ordinance every time? Because it seems to me we could have... I mean, this is a policy decision that I can't imagine us ever changing or going back on. I think it's something we all really believe in, that when city employees are activated in their military duty, of course, we want them to, we want to be able to make up the difference for their salaries and their benefits. So is there a way that we can do one ordinance, Mr. City Attorney, that can cover this?
Well, Ms. Hahn, we...
Because, I mean, God forbid, somebody forgets to introduce an ordinance, or...
We've attempted, but we've been informed that each time they change it, we have to come up with a...
Mr. City Attorney, could you answer that? Why we can't have, why we can't have one overreaching ordinance that reflects this policy?
I would have to confer with our labor relations people, but my understanding is that each action requires a separate ordinance.
Why? Why?
That's the rule.
Why? Can we change the rule?
Maybe Congress can change it.
Can we change the rule? I mean, again, this is a clear, this is a clear policy of the city council. You know, we believe in this, we want this.
I might add, we believe in it today.
Sometimes these operations get changed, their names get changed overnight. And again, God forbid that we miss one, and those who are called to duty in that particular operation are not covered by this. Why can't we do one ordinance policy that carries out this spirit for all city employees who are activated in military duty, no matter what the operation is, no matter where the operation is?
That's exactly what I attempted to do when we first started doing this, and I was informed that we need to do a new one each and every time.
Well, I think if it's a law, we write the laws, and we can change the laws. I think it's something worth looking at.
So let's make a request for the city attorney to come back and report on how we can make this a standing policy.
Mr. Clerk, do we need to do that as a written...
I'll make a motion for that, Ms. Hahn.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Zine, a second by Ms. Hahn, a report back from the city attorney.
How we can have a continuation instead of coming up every time.
But again, because these operations, sometimes they get changed, the names get changed in the middle of the night.
We will be happy to report back on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. LaVoye?
Just add another friendly amendment that we consult with the County of Los Angeles, which is like us, another government agency, what they do with the state, to see what similarities are, if there's some room. But also, in a way, too, it's good to have this back again to remind us, because unfortunately, for 10 years, we've been in a war in Iraq. And for all those years, to remind us that dedicated public employees who are in the reserves throughout, and that puts up 500, I believe you once said, Mr. Zine, that should be recognized for their extraordinary public service, in addition to their protection of this country.
And there are some entities that don't support this. So fortunately, this city does support our employees who are called active duty. We need to maintain the job for them when they come back, but some cities don't give them the balance on that, balance out the salary. So we continue to do it, and we get the reports back.
Ms. Hahn?
And I also want to make sure that this is retroactive to when the operation started versus when we brought it forward as an ordinance. Is that also correct? See, that's what makes me nervous about the way we're doing this.
It is, it is. It will cover anyone and everyone who's active duty, retroactive to the point as they change the definition. But once we get the report back, if we can change the policy...
I think we need one standing policy that reflects this. And while, Tom, I agree that we should never forget, maybe we can find other ways...
to the point as they change the definition. But once we get the report back, if we can change the policy.
Yeah, I think we need one standing policy that reflects this. And while, Tom, I agree that we should, we should never forget, maybe we can find other ways to remember city employees who are called to active duty besides always trying to remember on time to make sure that they have coverage in their salary and benefits.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hahn. So we have a motion to report back, and I'm assuming you want that. In how many days, Mr. Zine?
We have, we have, the council doesn't want to do it.
Mr. Zine? 30 days?
Aye.
All right, seconded by Ms. Hahn with a friendly amendment by Mr. Labange. So would you please open the roll on that? Close the roll, tabulate the vote. 13 ayes. All right, Mr. Clerk, what's the next item?
Madam President, would you like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special?
Yes.
Now, the card is Hahn, Wezar, Carrick, Corrine, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Wilson, Smith, West, and Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present in a quorum, Madam President.
What's the first item?
That brings us to item 29. It's an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, we have one card on that item. Why don't I take the card first? Mr. Sacks?
Thank you. Arnold Sacks, contractor to provide custodial and cleaning services. So is this one of those contracts that would be guided by the living wage ordinance that stands in the City of L.A.? And if it's so guided by the living wage ordinance, because it is a city, it's a contract to do work at the city, it will not be guided by the living wage ordinance that's in effect at the airport? Or would it? Or would there be two separate pay scales, maybe they're cleaning some buildings at the airport, that would cause them to get more money there, less money at other municipal buildings? I know, after listening to the council discuss how fervent they are regarding the need for a living wage ordinance, but what conditions are going to be made to provide insurance for the low-income workers who will be doing this actual work? Because the tenants regarding a living wage ordinance allow for the employer to eliminate health care, but provide extra pay of $2 an hour, $10 to $12, depending on which tier, where you're located, the living wage portion of the ordinance affects you. Maybe it even could be a CRA living wage ordinance. We've heard how they have their own wage for certain construction areas. So just knowing that it won't get any answer here, but if you're interested, find out.
Thank you very much. No speakers in the queue on this item. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and then tabulate the vote. 13 ayes. Thank you very much. Next order of business?
Madam President, would you like to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular?
Yes, if we've completed all the items on the special agenda, then we should.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred.
And the desk is clear.
All right, members, are there any announcements? Any announcements?
Yeah.
Mr. Labange, Ms. Hahn, do you have an announcement?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I believe Mr. Labange has an announcement.
As you know, this is Earth Month, tomorrow in the South Bay, along with Councilwoman Janice Hahn, we will join with city officials in the South Bay to salute the works of the ocean of Wyland and others who talk about preservation, conservation, and to continue to make people aware of these issues as it relates to saving the oceans. So this is Earth Month, and April tomorrow, in this date, we will all get together. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other announcements? Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I'd like to invite anyone who's listening, everyone who's listening. Tonight, we are dedicating Confluence Plaza on the corner of San Fernando Road and Figueroa. It's a transformation of a rather old industrial corridor into a green area that is connected straight with Los Angeles River. It's an effort that reflects the hard work of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, Conservation Authority, our city, our city family. And essentially, we'll be providing, inaugurating a stunning new interactive water show on a key intersection near downtown Alley River. It anchors a new bridge, we'll be building, the Riverside Drive Bridge. We'll be introducing a traffic circle, and we have two more properties that are city-owned that will also become green, green space, once we find a destination for one of the yards there. But it is going to be a very historic place, and it is a strong measure and commitment in maintaining and moving forward on the river master plan. So I'd like you all, and those who are listening in the Northeast, all Angelenos, the Confluence Plaza, which is adjacent to Home Depot Parking Lot, in the corner of San Fernando Road and Figueroa.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, Madam President. Caesar Chavez Foundation has scheduled its annual event tomorrow night at the Millennium Biltmore Hotel, and I'm going to have the honor of presenting the award to Paul Schrade, who has really become my brother over the years, who was with Senator Kennedy when he got shot in the Ambassador Hotel, who played a major role in creating the complex of schools which now exists at that site. It should be a great evening and a great moment to honor Paul Schrade. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labange?
I just wanted to add, for Mr. Reyes, the wonderful work at Figueroa and San Fernando, which are two great streets that connect, but the fountain that is there truly is remarkable as a gateway not to the confluence of both the Royal Seaco and the Los Angeles River. So I know there's your handprints are all over it, now they'll have some nice water on their fingertips. Congratulations.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. Any more announcements? All right, if you would all please rise for adjourning motions. Everyone, please rise. And I'd like to start off with something a little bit different, and I remember the day that we did this, because Ms. Hahn and then Councilwoman Gruel were there. I want to just read from this press release. Nothing more symbolically represented the strength, courage, and grace of Geraldine Ferraro than the beautiful pink rose designated specifically for Ms. Ferraro by the nationally resound Rose Hybrid Company, Jackson &amp; Perkins. Ms. Ferraro was honored this morning at a planting ceremony on the grounds of Exposition Park Rose Garden near downtown Los Angeles, the perfect setting to represent the hybrid tea rose as the latest addition to the Cause Rose family by Jackson &amp; Perkins. And a portion of the sales of the rose were designated to multiple myeloma research. The female representatives on the city council were President Gruel, Perry, and Hahn to welcome and recognize Ms. Ferraro for her contributions as a public servant, as well as her tenacity in battling multiple myeloma. Former Congresswoman, United Nations Ambassador, and best known as the first and only woman to be nominated for Vice President by a major party in 1985. What she said that day was, "On behalf of the millions of victims, survivors, and families affected by multiple myeloma, I am honored and humbled to have this beautiful Jackson &amp; Perkins rose named after me. There are several promising new therapies that are helping patients live longer, healthier lives, and I am grateful to Jackson &amp; Perkins for supporting the efforts of the multiple myeloma research." Ms. Gruel commented that Ms. Ferraro was a role model to her and to other women who strive to reach her level. Ms. Hahn said she was always impressed by all that Geraldine was able to accomplish in areas that many times were for men only. She was a woman of many firsts, and I applaud her for her many accomplishments. And I said, and I was the assistant pro tem at the time, "Women like Geraldine open the doors to others who know deep inside that they want to serve their communities and help them move forward." While she was in office, she focused on social and economic issues that would do just that, and she continues this effort today in an effort to raise awareness about funds for the fight against multiple myeloma. And it was a special moment in our history, and a special moment that we got to share with this incredible and very accomplished woman, mother, wife, Congresswoman, ambassador, lawyer, deputy district attorney, all those things. She led an exceptional life and gave us an extraordinary amount of her gifts. So I just wanted to rise today to remember that time, and Janice is here to speak about it, too.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ferraro. I'm glad, because what a great moment. You know, we have some, we have some great opportunities representing the City of Los Angeles, but that was a great opportunity to dedicate that rose that day at the Rose Garden, and realize that the proceeds from the sale of those roses would go to awareness of this multiple myeloma, blood cancer that Geraldine Ferraro actually eventually succumbed to. But I also remember my dad taking me in 1984 to, she was flying into Long Beach Airport for the very first time for her L.A. County visit, and I remember, as a young girl, going, actually, I was in my 30s, seems young now, and getting to meet her, and it was a big thrill, knowing that she was the very first woman to be nominated on a major ticket for a Vice President nomination. So it was great fun to get to meet her. Women did not have those kinds of role models in the political arena. So it was a lot of fun to get to meet her. And I love reading her bio, and really, she kept sort of breaking that glass ceiling wherever she went, even when she applied to Fordham Law School, I guess in the 50s, where an administration officer warned her that she might be taking a man's place. She was admitted to the night school, she was only one of two women in a class of 179, and she received her law degree in 1960. I also like her sense of humor when she said that being on the, having a woman on that ticket, the Mondale Ferraro ticket, did not help, and it did not hurt. She remarked, "Even if God was on our ticket, she wouldn't have been able to beat Ronald Reagan." So she had a great sense of humor. She was the first woman to be elected to represent New York's 9th Congressional District in 1978. She served three terms in the House, and it wasn't for another 24 years that then we, in the same presidential election, we actually had another woman, Sarah Palin, on a major ticket as a Vice President. Of course, we had Hillary Clinton, who was running to become President of the United States. So she really broke a lot of glass ceilings. She accomplished many things in her career. She was a fine woman, a fine public servant, and I felt honored to have interacted with her twice in my life. We will miss Geraldine Ferraro. She left a great legacy and opened the door wide, I think, to many, many women, particularly those who have agreed to go into public service.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, I just want to say, too, she visited this chamber recently, being a cancer survivor and a fighter, and a wonderful family. And I know it was when John Ferraro was here, it was always, are they related? Well, all Ferrars are related. But you think of, you think of this chamber and the people who've come here, you think of the honored position that we hold, that those who we meet or see who serve the 350 million Americans. Geraldine Ferraro certainly was a very, very special person, and I ask, as you do, Ms. Hahn, all members, for this.
Yes, please put all members on this. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, she was a trailblazer, and frankly, I look forward to the day when we have a woman President.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Anyone else with an adjourning motion? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Philippa Houston. She was born in Chicago, Illinois, in 1924. Age of six, her and her family moved to Los Angeles before settling into Pasadena. In Pasadena, she lived around such neighbors and famous heroes as Jackie Robinson, Tuskgee Airmen Bob Williams. But she grew up as a typical Los Angeles student, attending Pasadena City College and then UCLA. She had a significant community service career, serving on the Board of Directors of the Los Angeles World Affairs Council, Los Angeles Chapter of the American Red Cross, the KCET Public Television, the City of Los Angeles Greek Theater, United Way of Los Angeles, the oldest art institute. She's also a docent for the L.A. County Art Museum and the Museum of Science and Industry. She's a member of the Cardinal Mahoney Award Dinner Committee, a volunteer with the Los Angeles Urban League Head Start, and the UCLA International Student Association. She's survived by her husband of 65 years, Ivan Houston, whose family were the founders of the Golden State Insurance Company. She's also survived by her daughter Pamela and her daughter Kathy, and her son Ivan Houston. Services will be held on Friday, April 1st, at 10:00 a.m. at St. Jerome's Catholic Church at 5550 Thornburn Street, Los Angeles. And this, recently, the family was present where we rededicated the Houston Park in the 8th District at the Overhill and Docker, in which they, we honored Norman Houston as we rededicated the park with a number of new enhancements. But she had been ill for a long while, and after 65 years, Ivan's wife now is, rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Hahn and myself, we would like to be included on that adjourning motion. Any other adjourning motions? All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Meeting is adjourned.